We have been contracted with Regent Homes, working with them to develop the adjacent property for the Fairview Town Center to implement a master plan through rezoning and entitlements. And what we will be presenting to you tonight is kind of the process we've been through so far and sharing with you what we have submitted and have been working with through the planning department here with the master planning effort. With me is Jewel Anderson. She's our project manager on the project.
Excellent.
Are you ready for the presentation now?
Yes, sir.
Did you say Jewel?
Jewel, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson, right?
That is correct.
Repeat your names because she didn't get them.
Oh, okay. Greg Tidwell, G-R-E-G Tidwell.
Smith G Studio in Nashville.
Like the letter G.
Yeah, G-E-E.
G-E-E.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other lady is Anderson.
Yes.
Is she kin to them?
Yes, sir.
Mike Anderson?
Oh, Anderson Del.
Is she kin to them?
No, sir. She's recently joined us. She is from Colorado, from the Denver area.
Probably a cousin.
So we wanted to start tonight with the presentation of where we are in the planning effort and the rezoning, just by looking back at some of the master planning that the city has undertaken and the comprehensive plan for 2040 that identifies three potential sites in the city of Fairview for a town center component in the land use and character map. We understand this site adjacent to the city hall, which was identified as site number three in the comp plan, is the site that we're looking at this evening. So we wanted to show the land use plan that's part of that comp plan, just to identify, and we'll see if I can get this pointer to work specifically for y'all here and those that may be viewing at home. Right here beside the Bowie Nature Center, where we are right now, that is the site and the area in question for the new town center. So the next slide that we're showing identifies in the comp plan a preliminary, kind of we would call this a concept plan of a layout potentially for the town center. You can see Highway 100 going north to south here. You can see the Publix down in this corner. You can see the city hall where we are right now. And this diagram in the comp plan identifies a lot more property than the actual property in question that we're looking at this evening. The property we're looking at this evening is just the adjacent parcel, approximately around 50 acres here, which is a critical component of the town center vision that is identified in the comprehensive plan. We also know that the Grove property that is going through the planning commission recently is also adjacent to this property, just to the west of the property in question, the study property that we'll be looking at this evening. After looking through the comp plan and identifying and understanding a lot of the broader goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan for the town center, we believe that this proposed site plan and development plan will achieve those goals and objectives in a meaningful manner for the city of Fairview. So when we first were brought on board looking at the property, again, just a real quick identification, Highway 100 is here on the right side of the slide. The city hall is identified right here. So what you see in the white area is the property, the subject property in question that we are considering this evening. Typically, when we do a master planning project like this, we do what we call an opportunities and constraints study, just to look at the site in a very quick sketch form, identify the physical, political constraints and opportunities of the site. Some of the major ones, of course, we have is access to Highway 100 on the east side of the site. We do have a great adjacency to city hall here and potential other civic uses adjacent to city hall. We also have a great adjacency to the shopping center and the Publix grocery, just to the south of the site. One of the constraints we very quickly identified was the TVA easement and the TVA power lines that bisect the site, that run kind of southwest, northeast through the site. And then there's a lot of topography on the site as well. We've identified that by kind of highlighting some of the major elevation points or the ridge points on the site. You see one here with a little star. And then identifying the ridges and the swales and then understanding how, based on it being a greenfield site now, what is the stormwater doing? How is the stormwater leaving the site? And being sensitive to those concerns. Also, looking at the Grove's property to the west and thinking about that stub street that was planned in that, and we understand that plan has been amended since this plan has been created, with another street coming in to the south of the Grove's property that would be crossing onto this subject property. So we're also looking at potential infrastructure connections to complete that grid of streets and street network for the city that would help dissipate traffic and keep all the traffic from going to one congested point, but give it more access to flow back out to Highway 100. We also, going to the next slide, took this diagram a little further in the actual zoning package, which you see the cover sheet of here before you. And looked at other access connections, one being up to Lake Road, going up to the north, back to Highway 96. We understand in the comprehensive plan, that was a major, important connecting point from the town center location here, going back to the north, to be able to dissipate traffic directly through the town center area, back up to Lake Road, and keep it off Highway 100. So that is something that we're also, will be presenting as a solution in this master plan concept. Also looking at, sorry, I'll go backwards here. The adjacency to Bowie Nature Center, and this is obviously a great asset to the community and to the city. We see that as a benefit also to an adjacency of the Fairview Town Center and having trail access networks that could connect into the Bowie Nature Center and also connect that trail access along the TVA easement through to the northeast of the site. Hopefully, in the future, as the town center might grow in future phases and years to come, that that trail network going through the TVA easement could continue to the northeast. Sorry, there's a little bit of a technical glitch on the slide here, but we'll go through the master plan and keep going through some of the slides, this might clear up. In the master plan you see before you, this is a, what we call a concept site master plan. This shows how buildings on the site, through the rezoning process and the master plan, could come to fruition. What we're looking at in the red buildings up at Fairview Boulevard would be kind of our mixed-use town center component, where we would have commercial buildings. We're anticipating some of those could be single-story commercial. Some of those could be inline retail shops. And also, on the east side of what we're creating as a new village green or town center green, we would anticipate having some potential mixed-use buildings, which could be two-story buildings with ground floor, commercial or non-residential uses, could be office and upper-floor office or residential units. We kind of saw the TVA easement and the power lines as being a pretty major bisector of the site. So what we did in the master plan was kept the commercial buildings pretty much to the east of the TVA easement, so that they would have better access to Highway 100 and visitability from people coming onto the property. And then we were also looking to connect that village green component and that town center component down to the city hall itself. To the west of the TVA easement, everything that we're looking at right now is residential. So we're looking at a mix and a variety of residential housing types here. You know, in the creation of a true town center, we see this as the right place in the city of Fairview and propose it to be the right place to have some density of residential homes. So we're looking at some stacked residential flats, up to three stories, some town homes, which you see in the medium color of orange here, some two-story flats that have some tuck-under parking garages for the residents who have those. And then kind of transferring the density back from the higher density at the town center and the mixed-use area back to some single-family residential as it transitions back to the Grove development and ties into that development. We're also looking at creating an opportunity for some small, what we call courtyard cottage clusters. These are typically one-story or one-and-a-half-story homes that are really good housing alternatives for empty nesters who are looking for that single-floor living. They also work very well for first-time home buyers. Again, they're a smaller unit and they're kind of organized around common open spaces and garden clusters. What you see as far as the street network pattern, we'll go to that slide next. Okay, we'll go to the open space slide next, sorry. The open space slide shows the trail network that we're proposing, which would have, again, the TVA easement, having that greenway path connecting from the Bowie Nature Park up to the northeast, but also having a recreational path running along east-west of the Bowie Nature Park, along the property line. And we see these as really good opportunities to help tie in the town center itself to the Bowie Nature Center through a series of recreational paths and active trails. We've also identified some pocket parks in the community for areas of amenity, such as a potential dog park. Again, the courtyard cottage clusters for the cottage product. And then, of course, the main central Village Center up in the mixed-use area, the Village Center proper. We think that's a really great opportunity to create that gathering space for the city of Fairview, where, you know, during your celebratory times of the year, be it Fourth of July, be it homecoming, that would be a place for the community to gather and to celebrate the city of Fairview.
So did you say that was the Fairview Town Square, that part right there?
Yes, sir. So on this sheet as well, in the application, you'll see program types, be they either active or passive, and the acreages for each of those common open spaces and some of the formal open space programming elements that we would envision in some of those open spaces. So we also included a pedestrian circulation plan. What you see in the black lines is the major sidewalk network. And, you know, as far as town center planning goes, what we're really looking to create here is a pedestrian-oriented town center, where either the residents who live here or guests who are arriving from off-site park their cars. And the cars, we'll talk about parking a little bit, you know, in a town center where we really want the cars parked or behind the buildings. You know, in conventional commercial development, the parking lots are in the front, and you get a big sea of asphalt and right at the front door. And more of a traditional town center environment, what we would propose here is to park the cars to the rear of the buildings, put the buildings up on the sidewalks, have nice wide tree-lined sidewalks with park benches, and really get people walking on the streets to activate the community. So again, the black lines you see on this diagram illustrate those major sidewalk connections. The red circles you see are pedestrian crossings that occur at street intersections. We would also be proposing some improvements with our intersection of Highway 100 to do pedestrian crossings there. The yellow dots that you see on the plan refer to what we would call mid-block crossings or those pedestrian crossings that don't necessarily happen where the traffic is coming to a stop at a stop sign. So we would be proposing for those mid-block crossings, some sort of tactical visual crossing that is either some sort of a brick paver or a raised pedestrian crossing table that would serve to slow down traffic and identify that as a place where motorists are going to be encountering pedestrians. In the blue lines on this, you also see our proposed trail network, again, going northeast on the TVA easement and again, along the southern boundary with the Bowie Nature Center. So the street framework plan is very important in town center planning. And one of the things that we, as Smith G Studio, have been planning, traditional neighborhood developments for well over 20 years. And streets are so important in that we know we need to serve the needs of the motorists to access their homes and access the community and the different areas within the city of Fairview, as they're going to be coming through the site, hopefully, from areas to the west to Highway 100 and hopefully, in the future, going north back to 96. But we don't want the needs of the motorists to overweight the safety and concerns of the pedestrians with a pedestrian Village Center that we're seeking to create here. So one of the key components of traditional neighborhood planning is what we kind of call right sizing streets. So the streets that we're proposing would be a little bit narrower than what might be conventional in suburban development. Narrower streets and experience serve to slow traffic, serve to indicate to motorists that this is a place where you're going to encounter pedestrians, so slow down. Another key component of traditional neighborhood streets is having on-street parking, be it parallel or angled parking. We're proposing a lot of parallel parking here. And one of the key components of parallel parking, besides just the convenience of being able to park at your front door of your home, is also serving as a physical buffer between passing cars and pedestrians on sidewalks. It also serves to help slow traffic down as the traffic's driving down the street as well. The network plan you see shows some arrows that are kind of pointing at different directions off the site. The arrows that are pointing to the directions west, going into the adjacent Grove's development, we're tying into the street network plan of that development, again, to create that grid of transportation network that would help disperse traffic back to Highway 100 through the town center. So all the traffic leaving the Grove's would no longer have to go back to the north to access the Grove's development. The arrows pointing to the north are pointing to properties that are not under control or not part of this development, and those represent potential future connections to the north as properties might continue to develop in Fairview. The most important one of those is probably, oops, I went backwards. Is the one coming off, you see the green box here, that's the street one-way loop around the town center green. The street going to the north from there is going back towards Highway 96, and that was a connection that was identified as being very important, again, in the comprehensive 2040 plan. We're also looking for infrastructure improvements at the intersection here at Highway 100. We assume that there would be a signal there, and that would be part of the improvements for the development of the property. And also, the connection to the south down to the city hall that you see here. So in the package, we've identified all these different street types with different colors, which are keyed to the street sections that we would be proposing. What we've done in the application is we have not only kind of artistically rendered what the street's dimensions are and the different components of the street, be it the sidewalks, the parking, parallel parking and the drive lanes. We've also included photographs from real-world examples where these streets have been implemented successfully. Part of the experience that we have is going out into especially the southeast and other areas of the country and what we call benchmark touring some of the best developments in the country and measuring streets. We go out and we take our tape measures with us and we see what works and what doesn't. And that's what we've included here that you see on the next slides before you, as far as the street sections. So we're looking at a combination of some Village Center streets that have on-street parking and more hardscape and wider sidewalks around the Village Square. We're looking at a one-way loop street around the Village Square that you see on the lower portion of the slide there. And then some pretty typical residential streets. Some of these are actually in Franklin and areas local to Middle Tennessee. We also differentiate between in the residential streets, you know, density. You know, we do want to respect that streets that have a higher density pattern, be it town homes or stacked flat multifamily, will probably have more people parking on the streets, given times of the day, so giving them a little bit more elbow room to do that. Back in the single-family lotted area of the proposed plan, where especially those single-family lots are what we call front-loaded lots, where their garages and driveways are accessed directly from the street, we tend to see fewer cars parked on the street because more people park in their driveways. So giving those streets particularly a little bit narrower width helps maintain that slow traffic speed and neighborhood scale on those streets when cars are not parked there on the streets. We also included alley sections here. A good deal of the proposed development is going to be, especially for the residential, is going to be served by rear-loaded garages. That's very important in traditional neighborhood planning and design in that what we really want to see on the streets are stoops and porches. We don't want to see garages. We don't want to see the big, you know, 18-foot-wide garage doors and the 18-foot-wide driveway concrete coming down to the curve of the street. What we're really looking for to create here, again, is that pedestrian town center where the streets are lined with trees, they're lined with porches, they're lined with stoops, and the cars kind of go away to the back of the buildings and parallel park on the streets to provide that buffer, again, for pedestrian safety. The regulatory plan you see before you is, what we do is we take the master plan, what we call the framework plan of streets and alleys and blocks, and we identify potential different building types in each of those blocks, understanding that a plan of this scale, especially for a town center, could take years in phasing to come to fruition and completion. And that in those years of development, market conditions might change, desire for different types of housing might change. So giving the plan a little bit of flexibility, what we call controlled flexibility, to be able to navigate uncertain future market conditions is very important for the success of development and completion of the plan. So if you look at the plan in broader terms, the darker the color, the denser the development. So again, we're keeping the densest part of the development to the east of the TVA easement and what we call the town center square area. And we identify in Roman numerals different types of buildings that could be developed in those blocks. So you see a wider range of potential development pattern up closer to Highway 100, narrowing down to less dense building types and development pattern further to the west over at the Grove's It is important to note on that, go back to that slide once again, in that flexibility, the control does come in the maximum number of residential units or the maximum density, regardless of product type. So we are constrained to a maximum residential number. We're including that as 534 residential units in the overall plan. As far as the total maximum retail, we're proposing just over 15,000 square feet maximum retail and a total maximum restaurant, just over 17,000 square feet, total maximum office, just over 50,000 square feet. And then we also include maximum community facilities. Those could include clubhouses, amenity centers. We're including that as being just under 30,000 square feet total maximum for that. And then, based on those building types identified through the Roman numerals, we've included design guideline and bulk standard sheets for each of those potential building types, as well as character imagery of what we anticipate those buildings to be built, to appear as in architecture. So for example, building type one, which is our commercial and mixed-use buildings, the bulk standards chart is on the left-hand side of the sheet, talking about maximum height, which we're limiting to a maximum of three stories and 45 feet. How we handle off-street parking to the rear of the buildings or to the side of the building. We go through one of those sheets and identify those in a key plan for each of those building types that are identified in the master plan. Other building types, live-work buildings, these are buildings that are typically built as a town home, and they have a ground floor component that could be flexible, either to be an additional bedroom for the town home unit, or it could be built out as a visitable business. It could be built out as a visible insurance agent's office or real estate agent's office. Again, takes the town center commercial buildings and gives that use a transitional use back to the pure residential uses. Some of these images that you see on the, the character images here are from West Haven and Berry Farms here in Williamson County. Multifamily buildings, again, we're limiting these to a maximum of 45 feet and three stories. Multifamily buildings can be stacked flats, they can be elevator-served. The building that you see in the character image to the right on this slide is actually a condo building stacked flat that we designed and Regent Homes built in West Haven here in Williamson County. So the architecture styles, as we're going through these slides, what you'll notice is these are very traditional forms, architectural forms. That's what we would be proposing here and we would expect to see designed and built. Town home buildings, we call these the three-story, the park-under towns, so these do have a garage component on the ground floor to the rear, served by an alley. Again, when you walk down the street, what you're really seeing are porches and stoops and outdoor living facing and addressing the streets. Courtyard towns, these are more commonly a two-story town home that has a detached or semi-detached garage to the rear of the town home, accessed via an alley, and typically have a small private courtyard between that garage and the rear of the main building itself. These images that you see, again, are from Berry Farms. And it's also worth noting, all the images that you're seeing on the slides that we've included, most of these were designed by our architecture studio and delivered by and built by Regent Homes. A courtyard cottage building type is one that I've mentioned before. This is the product that we see as being very beneficial to provide that kind of what we sometimes call missing middle housing, where a lot of builders and developers are building housing, the biggest houses they can for the biggest families. But what we're seeing now in the market is there's a lot of downsizing of families as empty nesters are looking to downsize from their full estate homes, find a smaller place to live, often single-story, and often don't want the concerns of yard maintenance as part of that. So this gives an option for still having your own home, but having a common open space to share among the cottages and living in a one-and-a-half or a one-and-a-half-story home plan that's more conducive to that market. And then, single-family alley access, these are very typical in some of the traditional neighborhood developments in which we design. These are basically single-family homes that the garages are accessed from the rear via an alley, so that, again, the fronts that you see are dominated by porches and stoops and engage the town center pedestrian activity. And then, probably the biggest lots we would have would be a handful of single-family front-access lots. These are typically planned around the perimeters of the development, where we don't want to do a single-loaded alley against a property line. We'll just access those homes from the front or from the street side. And things that we typically try to do when we're laying out plans for these types of homes is keeping the garage pushed back from the vain body of the home, so that when you're driving down the street, what you really see and engage is the house itself, the front porch, and not the big garage-dominated landscape. We try to keep the garage subservient to the main form of the home. So these, the two images here on this slide to the left were some homes we designed at Stevens Valley, just down the road. And we also identify the need and desire for some community facilities. Now, these could be privately built and part of the HOA, or they could also be public-private engagement with the city of Fairview if needed. Sometimes, these buildings include small postal facilities. You see the post office, the Haversham Post Office there. We recently designed a plan down in Huntsville, Alabama, that has such a post office in the town center component. It's a great place for people to stop and get their mail and get to meet their neighbors. It's a really engaging component, an active component of the town center. Also, there could be open-space pavilions, such as the one you see on the right-hand side of the slide, that could be used for side of the slide, that could be used for family picnics, community gatherings, festivals, things of that nature. There could also be other civic buildings integrated into this plan if needed. If the city had a need for a new library location or something like that, those facilities have a place in this plan as well. Signage is very important. We didn't deviate much from the signage standards that we've seen in the base zoning, but typically in a town center, what we're looking for in signage control is more quality than message and identifying potential different signage types that work better in a pedestrian-oriented environment, such as the blade signs and the shingle signs that hang off the buildings, which are more important to be viewed from the sidewalk than passing traffic on, say, Highway 100. But we've also identified the need that there would probably be some monument entry signage into the town center as well, as well as building signage on the buildings themselves. We did include some of the civil engineers documentation on where we are right now from preliminary grading. If that, if there are some questions about that, this is somewhat of a challenging site from a topography standpoint. We have identified areas in the site for stormwater flow and management and release, controlled release. Some of those are primarily, most of the water is flowing south from this site, and we are getting some water capture from off-site from the north through our site to the south. So we do understand that stormwater concerns are very valid, and we are working with our civil engineer to propose at least the preliminary solutions to those for the rezoning effort. And this shows the watershed areas and the outfalls for 25 and 100-year storms. We also included just some supplementary slides for this presentation this evening, just to show some of the other, what we call benchmark communities, that when we're looking at creating a new town center, traditional neighborhood development, some other plans that we've been involved with around the area. Berry Farms is the plan on your left. It's really just in its first couple of phases at the northwest corner of Goose Creek Bypass and 65. That's the phase that's currently underway. We are currently master-planning the entire second phase of the town center there, as well as delivering architecture and buildings for that town center. Dave Ramsey's campus is down here on the southeast portion of the site, which is a major office component. And the remainder is still future phases to be infilled at Berry Farms there. Very successful master plan, very high real estate values there. Regent Homes is building a lot of multifamily and townhome product there as well that we've designed for them. West Haven, I'm sure some of you are familiar with, out on 96 Highway, just west of downtown Franklin, has been in our development for many years. We did not master-plan West Haven, but we are delivering quite a few, again, multifamily homes and townhomes there for Regent Homes. Very successful plan, using the same principles that we're using here. And then, as I've mentioned before, right down the road, Stevens Valley at Highway 100, near the Natchez Trace Parkway, we're serving as town architects there. We've delivered some master planning and design guidelines for that development and are now serving as town center architects, reviewing other architects' plans as they're proposing development in that community. And these are just some character examples of some of the buildings that have been designed and constructed in those neighborhoods. And we see these as very important because ultimately it's, you know, what do you see from the street when you're driving or walking through Fairview Town Center? And this is what we propose you will see. You will see active sidewalks, you'll see front porches, you'll see stoops, street trees, park benches, ample landscaping. It's really a place for the city to celebrate and gather and live, work, and play. That concludes our presentation. Dave, did you want to say some more?
I'm David McGowan. I'm the president and owner of Regent Homes. And so you'll know I've been involved with this type of development over the last 22 years. The first master plan, TND, Traditional Neighborhood Development, that was done in the city of Nashville was Lenox Village. And the team you see here, right here, Gray, me and I, we worked on that and got that particular community approved. It is now almost 22 years old. So you can actually go through that community and see how well it's developed and how well it's done over the years. And so there's a lot of little secrets you can learn about this type of community. One of the things that in the community is that no one maintains their own grass. We make sure that in this town center, everything will be maintained by the association. The same thing with the exterior of the buildings of anything that's multifamily. It'll be maintained by either the entity that owns that multifamily or the association itself. But again, certain guidelines on how it's maintained, how you irrigate it, how you manage that particular asset is there. We have been heavily involved in Berry Farms. When Berry Farms was originally planned, it's back in 2004, but during the recession, it was put on hold. After the recession was over, the boar fed group asked us to get involved. And so a lot of the product that is built in there is our product that we've built over the years, that we've perfected. And we're very, very proud of the product in Berry Farms, and it's done very well. We're heavily involved with the Caldwell tract that's getting ready to come on in the next two years. It's going through rezoning with the city. The city is allowing actually them to increase the density in that area to allow more of the multifamily product because it's so close to the interstate. And they feel like that's the best place for it. We're also heavily involved in West Haven, and the very first condos that were built there, we built those, the very first live works, we built those. We're also involved in one called Thompson Station. Thompson Station, that particular community went into bankruptcy. When it came out of bankruptcy, we met with the developers and told them we wanted to develop the front part of the property. So we had to go in and change things because originally it had a big Publix or a grocery store going in front. And the bottom line, the grocery store went up to Berry Farms. And we said, we got an idea to come back and do multifamily in there, as well as a lot of live works and mixed-use buildings. If you went into Tollgate now, and you will see those buildings built, they're just now being completed on the very first two sections. We have Mojo's Tacos going in one, we have a dentist in the shop in the commercial, we have everything from a hairdresser to nail salons and all that going in there, neighborhood retail-type stuff. And it's doing extremely well because of sewer capacity issues, it had low capacity. Within the next year and a half, we'll start on the other phases, which will bring another 200 units on at Tollgate right there in that community. We also purchased one out of bankruptcy called Crowthers Farms. Again, the architect team here have been heavily involved with redesigning that and fitting up to the current times to meet the demand, because the big-box retail is out of the picture now, it's more neighborhood retail. And so they're involved with helping us taking that back through the city and having it approved for, it's a total of 3,000 homes out there in that community. And we've got about 2,000 of those tied up that we plan on building over time. That community is actually mandated by the city that so many have to be condos, like maximum 15%, minimum, a minimum 15%, maximum 25%. And then, as far as townhomes, again, a certain percentage, and single-family is a certain percentage. And so we're building out that community. All of these communities do real well, and notice I use the word "community." We're not really building a neighborhood here, we're building a community. And what we want to do is community to be an asset to the city. So when you ride down the main highway here and you look over to your right, you just don't see a little two-story or one-story building, you see something that really catches your eye and creates a sense of place. And so that sense of place creates this community. And so in the front part of it, we have the higher density. As you move back to the back to where the Groves property is, we go to a lower density. And so all the street networks are designed for that. Again, we've been involved with these communities for years, and we've met with your city engineer, city planner, talked to the whiffs that we proposed. They made us a few adjustments. We've adjusted those streets to make sure that they fit into the plans for Fairview. We think that Fairview is ready now for this type of community. When we did Lenox Village, we were down on Nolansville Road, everybody thought we were fools. Who would go out that far out near Nolansville? That was way out in the country. Same thing is right now with Fairview. People ask us, I said, well, you got to realize is where will we be a year or two years from now? You think about if somebody wants to buy a nice home, a nice townhome, or a nice cottage home, what would it cost in the city of Franklin if he wants to be in Williamson County? The price is almost out of reach for the average person. And so 840, as well as the customer coming into the Nashville, greater Nashville market, the commute to the workplace has changed. We tell everybody, this device here has been a, has been a big change-maker, because people can work from home. They don't have to go to work in the office every day. They can actually telecommute every single day. At the same time, if they're in a live work, they don't have to have a receptionist downstairs, they can live upstairs, be a hairdresser, go downstairs and meet the customer when the customer actually comes there and opens the door and come in. Same thing with insurance agents, same with photography studios and things of that nature. So we're really excited about being in Fairview. We think it's going to be a great community, and we're looking forward to making a really true sense of place. And we're here tonight to help answer any questions along with our designers and architect team. And again, this same team, by the way, when we went to Huntsville, Alabama, and working on the development, that's the very first people we recommend, and they're heavily involved in communities like this. We specialize in this type of community. So this is what we prefer to do, and we enjoy it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tidwell, Mr. McGowan. We'll just open the floor if any of you guys have any questions. You two out there.
Yeah. Fairview's got a sewer issue. How did you address that?
Let me turn it on for me. Thank you, sir.
Fairview has a sewer issue, and we're concerned how you have addressed that.
We actually are working on the Groves tract as well, and we have met with Dixon and had a lot of conversations with them. There is sewer capacity. There will be some items that be worked out. What sewer actually goes to the Dixon Water Plant to be treated, and what will go to a step system, we're working on with Dixon right now. But we do plan to be able to address that through Dixon, and we've had several meetings and more to come. But the bottom line, this tract will probably have a combination of some step system that will go back toward the Groves and some that will be going directly into the Dixon sewer system.
I have a couple of questions here. I've just been making notes while I've been listening to you. It sounds so nice. I was sitting here thinking, boy, I'd like to live there. The greenway that you were talking about, the trail network, will that be paved, where you could ride a bike on it?
Basically, come on up to the, basically, if you look at how we look at greenways and green parks, and so there are linear parks, there's open space, there's common space, there's all kinds of little green spaces throughout there. So if you really study the book that Gray put together, you'll see, it was a little mixed up in the presentation. Now, you couldn't really tell, but all through it, you have different green areas. And so some of those areas will be for a dog park, some of those areas will be for a tot lot.
But the, the actual trail, that long trail?
Well, again, we usually go back to the city. In some places, the cities require to use mulch. Some people use gravel, and some people, if it's pedestrian use for bicycling kids and stuff, it goes back to asphalt. So we do actually a combination depending on the community.
And would it be lit at night?
Typically, they're not lit, because a lot of times they do back up behind some of the residential areas. But again, where you would cross the pedestrian areas that he has on the maps there, typically you will have lighting in those particular areas.
You know, a lot of times what we'll see as far as the materials for the trail network is if it's a trail network that's being used as an active recreation path that's connecting through the town center and connecting other places like the Groves, that might be an opportunity for a paved trail, because we would expect higher traffic, more bicycles, more kids on bicycles with their families. If you're talking about the trails that are leaving a trailhead in our plan and going south into the Bowie Nature Park, those would probably more likely be natural trails to match the trail network in the Bowie Nature Park.
Again, going back to the green space, we put a lot of gazebos throughout the neighborhood so that people can gather at those places and have a nice evening if they want to have a picnic with the family. The same thing in the main park, the town square. You know, we envision having a pretty nice structure out there that someone wants to be able to have a wedding or birthday party, they will be able to have it in the town square. Or if the city wants to be, have some type of festival in that area. So in Crowthers Farms, we built a large barn right in the middle of it, right near the old silos. And every weekend, that is used by the community for some major events. And the same thing with the one in Lenox. I'd say during this time of year, every single weekend, the association has it booked up for a wedding.
In the architecture, you were talking about that you always use traditional architecture, and I like what I see, you know? I've been through West Haven, Berry Hill, I've been, I've seen a lot of that. Would the city have any say-so or any choice in what type of architecture there would be, say, in the retail or commercial area, or would we have a choice or?
Well, basically, what we do, when you do zoning package, you sets up, allows us to do certain-sized structures. At the same time, when we come in for a building permit, that building permit will be reviewed. Typically, we assign a town architect. The town architect for most of our communities is Smith G. They make sure that whoever drew that plan, which we are allowed to use numerous architects to be able to have variety, they review it to make sure it meets the standards of that neighborhood, height requirements, the number of windows, amount of glazing on the front of the windows, and all has to be met. And so, you know, we'd prefer it to look more like a town area that grew up during the '30s or the '40s, the '50s, real traditional-looking, how it fronts the street and all.
Yeah.
But at the same time, when it goes through the city, the city does have the issue to permit and all. And so that book that you saw tonight, presentation, it has those standards in there.
Right. I would just like for ours to just be, just a little tweak it, just a little bit, and make it look a little bit unique, a little bit different than West Haven. I don't want to be a cookie cutter. I would like for it to be better or the best.
If you went to Berry Farms, you will see it's a lot different than, than West Haven. If you went out to Crowthers Farms, we actually have what we call a barn feel. A lot of the houses are designed.
I would like for it to be jaw-dropping.
Yeah. A barn, barn-style homes.
In a good way, I'm assuming.
But you know, we see in the main, as the main, when you ride down the road, we hope to see a building there that would have a very distinctive look and style to it that would tell you that you're in the center of the town center.
Right. You know, I just want it to be a little bit, just a little unique for us. That's all I'll say. So that's all I have.
I have a couple of questions. Will you be the developer general contractor on both residential and the commercial portion?
Yes, we are typically in all the ones that we develop ourselves. We are the main builder and the developer. And at the same time, that doesn't prevent us from selling. At Lenox Village, St. Thomas Health came in, wanted to build a large health facility. We had guidelines that they actually approved their plans when they came through. It was a two-story, it looks like a two-story building, but it's really a one-story building. And, and so at the same time, we sold that to St. Thomas, and they built it. And I can tell you, we already have a daycare center, we already have a medical center, we already have a fast-food restaurant that knows about what we're doing, because we're working with these people in other communities, that already indicated, hey, we're willing to be the first one on the list for Fairview. And I think y'all might know a few of them that have already shown the interest, they've been out here before.
Gotcha.
I'll just add on to that, what Dave was talking about a little bit before, about having a town architect is a very important component of that, in that when, Dave, if he does choose to sell off tracks to other builders that are coming in, other entities, that there is a review process to maintain and uphold the design standard for the development.
We've already met with one group that have shown some interest, and they understand the procedure because they've actually built in these type communities before.
Got it, got it. Are there, I'm sure you've talked to the city plenty about this, but what kind of partnerships are you all looking at integrating into this, as far as where the town center is? Any mixed, or not mixed use, but dual use for the city and for the development?
Typically, the neighborhood itself, anything that we build in the town center stuff can be, you know, rented out to someone to be able to use, let's say if it's a gazebo or something like that. Typically, the association, which will have a board of directors, we're usually diverse people who serve as board directors. And at the same time, we control that through a management company. So we bring a third-party management company in, and that third-party manages it. So at the trailheads, we anticipate having some type of structure there. A structure will be maintained by the association, not by the city. And so what happens at that, that structure? And so, what happens at that structure and what doesn't happen will be regulated by the Association. But again, it's tied into the city. But at the same time, y'all don't want kids out there at night, you know, whooping and hollering at 12 o'clock at night and disturbing the neighborhood and things of that nature. So, there'll be restrictions placed on that. But as far as a partnership with the city, anything that happens in the town center itself will be controlled by that Association. But at the same time, it has to meet the guidelines of the city. Anything the city has on zoning books, whether it's a restaurant, a bar, a grill, any of that type of stuff, or even a tot lot, or even a basketball court, or a, you know, tennis ball court, something like that, it has to meet the guidelines of the city.
Okay, so no public-private partnerships?
We don't really see it as a public-private partnership. As far as the park itself, itself, that park will be a part of the common area of the Town Center Association. But at the same time, you know, who can use that park? And so, if you went to all these parks that we've built as well, and again, it's all kinds of parks, the linear parks, it's just nice green space you walk through. So, you think about going down the road along Bowie Park, there'll be a long green space along that with a walkway. So, anyone can walk up there because it'd be a public right-of-way. And they can go back to the trailhead, walk down into the park. So, we envision there'll be people that come in from outside of the neighborhood, they'll park somewhere in that neighborhood, probably use one of those trailheads to go back into the park.
Thank you.
I had two different questions. One, I was curious about fire truck access. I believe the ladder truck takes 16 feet wide here to set up. And two sections of the street do not have 16 foot of driving room to set up without riggers on. And so, I was just curious.
Let me go back to the slide with the street sections on them. I believe you're referring probably to some of the one-way streets that we have?
It's the green up in the town center and the blue in Ridge Park.
Right. So, what we've done in several other communities where we do have to accommodate apparatus with the emergency crews, pardon me as I go back to that street section here. So, you're looking at the 45, I believe one of them is the commercial one-way 45 foot right-of-way at the bottom. Is that correct?
Right, correct. I think it's 10 foot wide, driving.
And parking.
So, if someone's parked, depending on the building they're trying to reach, it'd be hard to set up the...
Right. So, what we would have to do to that street section, and I can't read it from here and I think it may have been that way originally, is what we would do is propose a mountable curb on the park side of that street and do a paver section that on the day-to-day, the average motorist coming through that street would say, it's a different color, this is really my driveline. But in the case of an emergency, apparatus could mount that curb and use that curb. That's the solution that we would use in that instance. On the other street, was it the...
The dark blue, the next...
Dark blue. That would be the same thing where you see that concrete strip on the park side of that street that would need to be a mountable curb also, or a roll curb so that the apparatus could use that in case of an emergency. But again, on the day-to-day for your daily trips, you don't want that street being that wide for speeding traffic. So, it does give that visual and soft edge to encourage motorists to stay.
Franklin has some of those more specialty trucks and we're just not a big enough city yet to have some of that need.
Sure.
Unfortunately. And then my other thing was about parking more up in the commercial section. Is that all free parking? Is there thoughts of, you know, meters, anything? What have y'all done previous? What?
Typically, do not do meter parking.
Okay.
And again, a lot of the parking is behind the buildings. And or inside garages and all. But so, there is allocation for street parking, but at the same time, a lot of the parking will be behind. So, typically, if you went out to Toll Gate today or West Haven, you would see the same thing where we have, you know, live works and commercial buildings. Behind it is the bulk parking and in front of it, you have, you know, short-term parking with usually 30 minutes to 45 minutes.
Yep.
Gentlemen, I'd like to respect your time and also know that we're covered on five more minutes before our actual planning commission meeting starts. So, how might we connect with you post this meeting to discuss more details?
One thing we told your staff was that we're available to wait till after this meeting if necessary, if you've got more questions to ask. And the bottom line, we're coming back to your planning commission next month to present to you for approval. And so, at the same time, I don't know how long your meet's going to last tonight, but if need be, we'll be glad to stay after the meeting. And but, yeah, Mike has got all our connections. We've been heavily involved with him and the staff and the city engineer and the city manager.
Wonderful, thanks, sir. I know I for one would like to get together and sit down for an hour or two and just talk more details about this.
One of the things that we've done before, Greg was actually with us, when we've actually taken groups to other communities to see and walk these and touch and feel them, to see what's happening. And so, we have been able to do that in the past. We've actually, when we first went in Nashville, we actually offered to fly people down to Orlando to see some ideas like we were proposing to do. The city said, we couldn't, no, we couldn't do that. It was improper. But the city could take care of that and we can come along. And so, we actually did that. So, again, a lot of times, if you can see it and touch it and feel it, you can understand it a lot better. But we're available to meet with anyone to go through this plan. Micah has all our contacts.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Commissioner Dawson, Vice Mayor Anderson, anything? Thank you guys so much for presenting this tonight and we shouldn't be too long tonight. So, if you guys do stick around, somebody will ask you questions. Thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll start our planning commission meeting. Good evening. We will call the Fairview Planning Commission meeting to order June 8th at 7:04 PM. Mr. Sullivan, if you do, roll call for me, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Butler?
Present.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Ms. Qualls?
Here.
Ms. Rainey?
Here.
Ms. Shulost?
Here.
Ms. Sinyard?
Here.
Do you have a form?
Thank you, sir. If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we're in meeting today to take matters of business, got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice supreme.
We will move to approval of the agenda. Just two notes. The minutes, since we didn't have those, we'll push those off till next month. And then a question of old business is usually before new business, so we'll just swap those, old and new. If you entertain a motion as I've ended.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Jenkins, Anderson. Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir. Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls?
Aye.
Ms. Shulost?
Aye.
Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Citizens' comments?
We have none tonight.
Thank you, sir. So, we'll start with old business. Item one, PC resolution, PC 2421 subdivision regulation interpretation, Sam Burgess, major subdivision, map 47, parcels 92.02, 92.03, 92.04, applicant Joe Chaplin.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That's a matter that I think Commissioner Sinyard asked me to take a look at at the last meeting. I've done that. I've communicated with her about it today. Also received an opinion letter from the developer's attorney, Ms. Mary Beth Hagan in Murfreesboro, which I read. I've also spoken to Ms. Hagan, had a good conversation with her on the phone this afternoon. So, here's my thought about this and then I'll tell you what my thoughts are and then I'll tell you what I discussed with counsel. I think that the regulation 1-113.107 is clear. And what the second part of that regulation says, and I'll just read what I think is pertinent here, in any instance where a permanent easement is used to provide access to a lot or tract of land, having been or being separated by deed or plan from other property, such easement shall be at least 50 feet in width. Period. Where a permanent easement is proposed to provide access to more than one lot or tract of land in excess, way shall be constructed within the easement which will meet or exceed the standards for design and construction of public ways set forth in these regulations. So, I think that's the relevant language. And so, I think that what is important, there's four lights, as I know, that are being developed here. And so, the issue is, are more than one of those lights being accessed via an easement? Now, on the look on the drawing of this development, it looks like clearly Lot 1 borders Cumberland. No doubt about that. Cumberland Drive. Lot 1 and 4 wore Cumberland Drive in the front. Lot 2 and 3 do, when I first looked at this, I thought clearly Lot 3 doesn't touch Cumberland Drive. And Lot 2 doesn't touch Cumberland Drive. And that's the way I understood it. And then I got counsel's letter. Counsel said Lot 2 touches Cumberland Drive. So, that was confusing to me. So, I called her and we had a good discussion about it. And the way she explained it to me by phone today, Mr. Burgess, is that the shaded portion of Lot 2 is actually within the legal description of Lot number 2. It's not an easement, but it's within the legal description. So, Lot 2 sort of shaped like a flag, comes down, touches Cumberland Drive. If that's true, my opinion is, I communicated to Ms. Sinyard today, if that is true, then Lot 1, so long as Lot 1 can be accessed not by the easement but by Cumberland Drive and is accessed by Cumberland Drive, that'll need to happen. And Lot 2 is touching Cumberland Drive, so Lot 2 would be accessed by Cumberland Drive. Lot 4 is irrelevant because it's over here by itself and it's touching Cumberland Drive. The only lot that would be accessed by an easement would be Lot number 3. And so, then we go back and look at the language of this. If that's true, there's only one lot that's being accessed via an easement. And in my opinion, that would mean that the easement would still need to be 50 feet in width according to this language, but it wouldn't need to be to public way standards. I explained that to Ms. Mary Beth Hagan. She agreed with me, at least I thought we left that phone conversation, I thought it was a professional conversation and we seemed to be on the same page. So, that's my opinion. I've communicated that to the city manager and to Commissioner Sinyard. I hope that helps. I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Basically, the short of it is there's no issue that the city has with this any longer, is what you're saying.
I think that's right. I mean, I think that only based on what I've learned, only one lot's being accessed by an easement and that's permissible. It happens routinely, just has to be a certain width and I think the developer knows that.
And if I'm, there was a question last time about the makeup of the easement and you were saying that you needed it to be gravel in order for it to be financially feasible for you or worth your while. Is that accurate? Isn't that saying, you're saying that that can be done as well now?
It would be built more like a shared driveway where there's widened areas for those two homes to share that singular drive, but it doesn't, it does mean or should mean to us that it doesn't need to be 22 feet wide because we're only creating one easement lot, which is the way Joe designed it.
I'd like to go ahead, group.
So, then is it my understanding that based on the language of this resolution, we need to deny it or approve? How does, what's the best way to go forward with the language now that I think we're all in agreement about what needs to be done?
I gotta go back and look at the resolution.
If it's only two lots, would it be a minor subdivision and could be handled by staff or?
It would still be a four-lot subdivision. So, it would still come before planning commission.
So, we would entertain a motion to approve tonight if, or deny based off the feelings of, does it satisfy the language?
I make a motion that we approve.
If you could, turn your mic on for me.
I make a motion that we approve. Second.
Anderson, McDonald, a motion to approve the four-lot rezoning.
One moment. It says, we probably need to amend that motion because it says constructed to city standards for public ways. The way the resolution reads is not basically what we're trying to approve here.
Mr. Butler, you just want to amend the motion to strike the...
Looking for the copy of the resolution. Collins has a copy here. Okay, yeah. So, let's take a look at it real quick.
Yeah, so the second whereas statement would need to be removed because it's not going to be constructed to a city standard for a public way. Because it will not be a public way, it would be a driveway.
It'll be nice.
It's fine.
And then... So, point this out.
Access for Lot 1 off of Cumberland.
So, show me what you're referring to, Ms. Sinyard.
On Resolution 24-21, the second whereas city staff has requested, but we probably need to add a whereas, he adds access off of Cumberland for Lot 1.
Yeah, whereas city staff has requested submittal of the four-lot subdivision to provide access, design and constructed to city standards for public ways along zone easement and probably just add another whereas, is that what you're talking about? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, so strike second whereas and add a whereas, access for Lot 1 off of Cumberland Drive is added. I didn't make the motion, so whoever did that's going to have to amend it.
I agree with that. It just cleans it up.
Mr. McDonald, if you could, if you would like to remove your second, if you'd...
I will remove my second.
Mr. Anderson, if you could amend your motion to include that language.
I amend my amendment to include the language. Because you all have to restate it slowly so we can all understand it.
Yes, whereas city staff has requested resubmittal of the four-lot subdivision to clarify that their, that lots 4, 1, and 2 have access to Cumberland Drive.
Motion as read there.
Yeah.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion, staff? Did you have anything?
Just to add one word.
Yes, sir.
Lots 4, 3, and 2 have independent and separate access.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Lot 4, 3, and 2? Yes, sir. So, Lot 1 has its own access. Lot 1 will have an easement off of Lot number 2.
Okay. No, is the intended...
I'm sorry, Lot number 3 will have an access off... Yeah, Lot 3 is the one that's on the flag lot. Lot number 3 will be accessed by easement, lots 4, 3, and 2. 4, 2, and 1.
Who's on first?
I got it.
Lot 4?
Who's on first?
Lot 4, 1, and 2 will have independent access to Cumberland Drive.
Thank you, sir. So, that's the intent of the motion. Do you have a second with that intent? Any additional discussion?
We should add that Lot 3 is accessed through an easement.
Yes, sir. Correct. Any additional discussion?
Yes.
Any questions out here? Okay, Mr. Sullivan.
All right, let's see. Anderson?
Aye.
McDonald? McDonald.
Aye.
Butler.
Aye.
Calley.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Qualls.
Aye.
Shulis.
Aye.
Senyard.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
New business item one, PC Resolution 27-21, annexation Lampley property, 114 acres, map 21, parcel 62 and 63, property owners Norman Lampley. And I believe, do we have someone here representing the... If you will just state your name for me.
Good evening. Nathan McVeigh with T-Square Ensigning.
Thank you, sir.
Just for record, we do have an agency agreement from the Lampley family.
Thank you, sir. Property on Northwest Highway and Dyson Oakley Road. Does anyone have any questions?
What is the zoning that's coming in us?
It would come into the city if it has an R-40.
This is just a straight annexation. There's no zoning other than that.
And for what it's worth, the RS-40 zoning designation does comply with the Fairview 2040 comprehensive plan for this particular lot.
Is that a statement or a question?
Nope. Just making sure.
That's good.
We are the planning commission, so I like to reference the plan.
That's perfect.
Do you have any intended use at this time, other than residential?
No, sir, just residential at this time.
Are you in preliminary drawings for the drainage and communications with sewer systems?
So for sewer, we have been talking with Water Authority of Dixon County. They've given us some options to serve this with sewer. The preliminary slopes also came back pretty positive, so we're looking at step systems as well. So just looking through the cost-benefit analysis and what's most economical at this time.
It has some pretty heavy undulation in the middle, so...
Yes, sir. It seems to be a blue line stream. It'll be protected accordingly.
What does it drain off to?
It's going to drain southwest, as you see on the screen.
The Turnball Creek? Is that where?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll motion to approve Resolution 27-21.
Second it.
Senyard. We'll just stay real quick. That currently, it's Williams County. It is zone MGA 1, so municipal growth area 1, which means this property could be developed as one-acre lots, which would be the same as our R-40 designation in the county, not in the city right now as it sits. Just for... Any additional questions or...
As it stands, do you have any idea how many lots or how many homes you plan on putting on that property?
Not at this time. You know, due to the slopes in the topo, we're on a slope analysis. I'm sure that'll have some impact. The weiner has some impact. There's also been discussion with staff for other uses, so we'll do that analysis and come back with a plan.
I guess the reason I'd bring it up more so, just for discussion for the panel, but if I'm not mistaken, wasn't there some property on that road that came up similar use that wanted to be annexed in? And we were... They were told no due to traffic concerns? Isn't that accurate?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
Just a couple months ago?
I've been a change of subject.
Okay.
Not for zoning, no.
Any additional questions? Do we have a first and a second? Mr. Sullivan.
Senyard.
Aye.
Calley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Butler.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
McDonald.
Aye.
Qualls.
Aye.
Shulis.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. New business item two, PC Resolution, PC 28-21, rezoning William C. Sullivan and Catherine Sullivan. Current zoning, commercial general. Proposed zoning, RM 12 multifamily, 37.14 acres, map 46, parcel 87, property owners, estate of Lauren Catherine Sullivan.
Again, for the record, we do have an agency agreement on this, giving developers the permission to use.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, if you could just state your name for me.
Ben Estep.
Barry Sullivan.
Thank you, guys. And if you guys want to take the floor, if anybody has to start the question, if you have just an update of where you are and what you're back with?
Yeah, we came in a month ago and asked for the 20 zoning, listened, came back. Micah, do you have the picture of the...
Yeah, the next slide should have that development and that proposal for a future.
Yeah, so this is what we had put together, and as you can see, for the 2040, this ground is designated to be commercial on the front and then transitional neighborhood on the back part of it, and that's essentially what we're doing here. Single family that abuts the majority of the single family around the property, transitioning into townhomes, multifamily, and then cottages. So coming back for a 12. Some of the numbers that are up there in the left-hand corner, those numbers are a lot higher, but we just wanted to at least get you a visual and what we're planning on doing. You'll notice that there's blue stream going through there, so, you know, when the time's appropriate to bring in the master plan, there's all sorts of greenways and natural area through there, and we're trying to be cognizant of the single family around the exterior. And then keeping the commercial along the front. But for any and all questions.
Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Collins, what does the current PUD designation... Where does a PUD designation stand moving forward with residential zoning? Are we completely removing it?
No. Having a overlay development will still be around with certain situations. Overlays are beneficial when there are multi-residential or commercial uses all within one development. So it's the plan for that to stay around but be structured differently than we've done in the past.
Fair enough.
With this development, it would have to come back with the proposal that's being shown for the single family. It would have to come back as master development plan for the zoning with that overlay, but it would then come with commercial, multifamily, and single family all together as one development, which is the truer intent of the planned overlay development doing so. For request tonight is straight RM 12 multifamily, which just would allow the multifamily aspect, but it was discussed with me that it would come back at a later point for the development for the planned overlay development and have it zoned at that point.
Thank you. And it's my current understanding that the RM 12 zoning designation would provide a less dense area than an RM 8 with PUD wood. Is that correct?
Once you say with PUD, with POD, that changes everything. So the density at that point would be based on a development that was brought forward to us. The density for straight RM 12 is 12 units per acre. And that would be what we would be looking at if something came back with the POD overlay. That would then change based on many different circumstances. So to say once more dense or less dense, it's development-based.
Thank you.
I was curious. What does this development back up to?
There's single family that is around the perimeter on the three sides.
That would be Dogwood, I believe, back there. Is that correct? Correct.
Dogwood on the east and Glen Ave.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Jingle Market would be in the top-left corner there.
That's correct.
Jeffersons.
And we have this on there as cottages right now.
Oh, okay.
On Plan East, the yellow-colored lots, what sizing are we... Are those half acres, quarter acres?
For the single family, it's going to vary when we bring it back in, but it's probably, I'd say quarter acre.
Okay.
And, you know, depending on what we bring back in.
Okay.
Here again, our whole thought on this is to try to have that entry level for the area, so.
Any additional questions or discussion? We'll just make a note, a point of reference, that West Way that just completed was an RM 12. The townhomes in front of West Way, the Meadows Townhomes is an RM 12. And then Park Village, Legacy, Roundtree, are all RM 12, just for reference of what that density looks like.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 28-21.
And I will second that. Qualls. Jenkins. Any additional discussion or questions?
I would say that, for the record, thank you for bringing this back. Because last month, our RM 20 just was totally different from our original 2040 plan, right? So the fact that you went through and then brought this back to us, I just appreciate it a ton. And the RM 12 designation aligns more with the spirit of the residential transition neighborhood that we had intended for this spot than the previous one did. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see a little bit more work done on Plan North backing up to the homes. I know it's kind of this really tight hinge point between like the Jeffersons commercial and those homes, but some of those, just making sure that there's a lot of buffer. I know they're deep lots, but with back at those homes, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. I don't think they ever thought they were going to be backed up to something like this when they bought those homes.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional? Mr. Sullivan.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Shulis.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming back.
For the record, this gentleman is a phenomenal developer. He whips this all down. Thank you all.
All right, we'll move to bonds. Just for note, no action needed. Number one, performance bond, Sweetbrier subdivision, face 2, $65,000. And that is correct, right? No action needed. Item two, reclamation bond, Aiden Wood subdivision, face 2. Performance bond, Aiden Wood subdivision, face 2, $1,311,600. And item three, performance bond, Fernville Flats, $152,100. And then we'll go to reports for discussion and information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you all for being here early tonight. The work session, I think, was beneficial to have that project brought for us and to have that before it comes forward for a vote. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blackburn.
I just echo what Micah said. I think that, you know, bringing these projects ahead and let us all kind of sit down and discuss and see what these exciting new projects are coming forward and being involved on them on the front end and being able to answer a lot of these questions more intelligently whenever they come up for vote and the next steps.
Thank you, sir. City manager, Mr. Collins.
Nothing for tonight, sir.
City attorney, Mr. Potter.
No comments, sir.
Thank you, sir. Communication from the planning commission members. Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Jenkins.
No, sir.
Senyard.
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Shulis.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Calley.
I just want to thank the staff for bringing them in early and having the early session that we had because it saves a lot of time during the meeting. And the more we can do this in the future, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Sir. Ms. Qualls.
I just want to say that it's exciting to think about a town center. I've been here for... I'm not from Fairview originally, but I've been here a while, and I've often wished for something like this for Fairview, so I'm excited about it, and I'll look forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
I just want to amend what she said. We always, when we critique a development, it's not our intention is to run them off. It's our intention is to help it comply. And by getting a pre-review like we did tonight, it allows us to know that we're trying to do the right thing and also to let the people know that Fairview does want to grow and grow correctly, and this is what we're looking for.
Thank you, sir. I also want to thank you, staff, for getting in, for the board members coming out for the joint work session, for the applicant. And we did talk last month about the design review manual. I don't think we've said in planning commission meeting, but our intent is to have it, out for bid, to have an outside third party go through our design review manual to kind of increase the speed and the success of that document. Just an update from that for the future. And that is all I have. Will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.